Let me call our meeting back to order. Do we have a closed meeting certification?
We do. I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed meeting.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Can we please have a roll call vote?
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Chair Carlson?
Yes.
So moved.
Awesome. Do we have a motion coming out of the closed meeting?
We do, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the hiring of Person One.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on from that will be called to order, roll call, basically, roll call. Let's go around the room, starting with Mr. Holden.
Ross Holden, School Board Attorney.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall District.
Kate Akoff, representing the Jack Jewett District.
Jono Alcaro at large.
Judy Lee, Ryanna District.
Katrina Carlson, the Ryo District.
Graham Page, Samuel Miller District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Sunuthi Amrasingha, Student Rep.
Matthew Haas, Superintendent.
Christine Thompson, Clerk to the Board.
Great. Next up will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Item three is approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item four on the agenda, approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Second from Dr. Berlin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six on our agenda, skipping five. Five is if we pull items from the consent agenda. Item six is announcements, and we will go ahead and start with Spotlight on Education.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Even in the age of automatic spell check and artificial intelligence, there is still a place for the three R, particularly reading and writing. That's a message reinforced every winter when we celebrate thousands of elementary and middle school students who compete in their school spelling bee. Each school crowns a champion, and all of our champions come together in elementary and middle school versions of our vision-wide competition. For the 17th year, we are recognizing the best of the best, the first, second, and third place winners who will represent Albemarle County's public schools in the Regional Bee on Saturday. Students from schools across central, schools throughout central Virginia will vie for honor of competing in the National Bee in early June. Two of our league coaches, Kimberly Gibson and Andrea Blount, proudly provided faculty support this year, knowing that even in a sophisticated technological world, being able to master language construction and to use words properly and effectively remains a vital lifelong learning skill, a skill that always will be fundamental to academic and career success. This is the second year that we conducted two spelling bees and are able to recognize two champions. Vihan Restogi from Baker Butler Elementary School and Sarish Shrimath Termala from Henley Middle School are our first-place winners. Grace Lynn Wickline from Stone Robinson Elementary School was second, and Broadus Woods Hannah Belander was third. For our middle schools, Audrey Ishler from Burleigh was second, and Ellis Worley from Walton was third. All six of these outstanding students are in the Regional Bee this Saturday morning at Albemarle High School, beginning at 9:30. I'd like to invite Ms. Gibson and Ms. Blount to join us at the podium to share some thoughts about this year's divisional round spelling bee and to make some presentations. And I think on behalf of their colleagues, Vihan and Sarish will tell us how we two can win a spelling bee.
We thank you for this opportunity to recognize these outstanding students this evening. We want to quickly share with you a little bit about the process and how these amazing spellers got here tonight. First, each school had a written bee to identify the top 20 spellers who would participate in their school spelling bee. The winner from each school bee advanced to the division spelling bee.
Tonight, we are recognizing these impressive spellers who wowed us, not only with their ability to think critically in order to spell challenging words, but also with their poise and grace as they competed in front of a large audience. The elementary went about 14 rounds, and I was saying, I think, in my head, I was doing it, and I made it to maybe round three. At this time, we would like to recognize and celebrate our elementary division spelling bee winners. Our first-place winner was Vihan Restogi from Baker Butler Elementary School. Come on up. You received your plaque. Our second-place winner was Grace Lynn Wickline from Stone Robinson Elementary School. And our third-place winner was Hannah Belander from Broadus Wood Elementary. Congratulations, and we wish you the best as you compete on Saturday.
Would they like to come around and shake our hands?
Sure.
So usually, you start over there, and then you circle in front of us, and your parents can get pictures if they want.
Yeah, they will.
Our first-place winner was Sarish Shrimath Terumala from Henley Middle School. Our second-place winner was Audrey Ishler from Burleigh Middle School. And our third-place winner was Ellis Worley from Walton Middle School, who could not be with us tonight because she is at another school event, I believe it's volleyball competition, that got rescheduled. So applause for Ellis.
Thank you for joining me in wishing all of these students well in their next step as they represent Albemarle County in the regional spelling bee at Albemarle High School. Just as a reminder, this Saturday morning, beginning at 9:30, you all are invited to join and cheer them on. We would like to close with a few words of wisdom and reflection from our winners. Sarish, would you like to share with us a few words?
Hello. My name is Sarish Shrimath Terumala. I'm a seventh grader at Henley Middle School. Competing in a spelling bee is really, really exciting. How it helps students is that, first of all, it helps your spelling skills. It also kind of helps your public speaking skills, because you get more confidence in speaking. And the best approach of doing the spelling bee is probably study hard and be prepared.
And Vihan is going to share his words of wisdom.
Hi, my name is Vihan Restogi, and I'm a fourth grader at Baker Butler Elementary School. And being in a spelling bee is exciting, and the best way to probably prepare for it is to study hard, stay focused, and yeah.
So we want to thank you all for those gems, and we want to thank you, Board, for your support of activities such as the spelling bee. Thank you very much.
Could I just ask one question?
Yep, there might be a few questions.
Sure.
How much of the time in school is spent helping the students, and how much is it outside? I'm sure it's a lot of outside work.
To prepare, is that clear?
I'm sorry, to prepare for the spelling bee.
So the preparation in school is probably far less than the preparation for the bee, and I think that probably our participants and our winners could speak more to the time that they spent outside of school, if either one of you all would like to speak to that.
Yeah, actually, I think all the spelling bee winners, if you come up real quick, I think there'll probably be a few questions, and y'all can chime in with the answers. Put those public speaking skills to the test. But Dr. Akoff, did you want to repeat it?
Well, I'm just curious to know how you prepared. How much did you do at nights and weekends, or were you able to prepare some in school? Or what was your routine?
So, once I got home from school, I would read a page of words, and then I would give them to my parents, and they would ask them to me, and I would spell them as best as I could.
Have they become good spellers, too?
I think so.
Let's see, I have a question. Do you all feel that you were good spellers before this, or is spelling something you can learn, or are there tips and tricks that maybe those of us who can't spell as well can do?
Before, like a year before, I wasn't that good, but I don't know, I think I developed a habit of reading a lot, so I think that's how I got a bit better at spelling. And how I prepared is I basically kind of got some words from a list, wrote out their meanings, and then read over them, and gave them to my parents to ask me their spellings, and I would spell them as best as I could.
I think any one of you, I'm sorry, could answer how you prepared.
Or what's your favorite word? You have a favorite word?
I don't know what my favorite word is.
It's a hard one.
Would you compete again next year?
How did you prepare? You can pull the mic down to you.
My mom and my grandma practice words with me, and my mom tapes words to the walls so I can look at them wherever I go.
You can't escape.
Any final questions for our final participant?
Just what advice would you give someone in your class or otherwise about how to compete?
Like, don't rush.
And would you agree?
And the pink sweater?
Yeah.
I would say that you need a lot of, like, just dedicating small amounts of time adds up to like a large accomplishment, so I would say just find the small piece of time to work up to your goal.
That's probably great advice, I feel like, for a lot of things in life, dedicating a small amount of time.
I think we have one more person who hasn't spoken yet. Oh, did you speak in that peach t-shirt?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you all again. I will say, I've been through many board meetings, and this is always my favorite part, is talking to students and seeing all that you guys are capable of and can accomplish, and knowing that you guys are the future is really inspiring, and that you'll be much better spellers than I was. So thank you.
Good luck Saturday.
Madam Chair, I did serve as one of the judges for the spelling bee, and it was really good that I had that list beside me so that I could check your spelling, because I think I would have been eliminated probably at least by the third round, possibly the second, but I know by the third round, I would have been gone. So congratulations to all of you.
And I'd also like to say to the two of you, the hard work that you put in on these bees, I was only there for the middle school one, which had a very interesting ending to it. And I would also say that Mr. Page did look rather knowledgeable on stage. But thank you both very, very much. I know you put a lot into this every year, and it's greatly appreciated. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, let me pull back up.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Just one question, like, how?
Can come up to the mic?
Yeah, how schools prepare children for the spelling bee? I think the major part was played by Vihan's schoolteacher, Ms. Adams. I mean, spelling is one thing, but then handling the pressure on stage, when I was sweating on my seat, I was not even on the stage, and I was spelling all the words wrong. So I think the learnings that Vihan got, the preparation that he got in the school, was fantastic. I mean, he always took a breath. He knew how to handle pressure. He knew what to expect. And that's a very big thing. We did not know what to expect, you know, how to behave, ask questions and stuff like that, so it was all done in the school. We just, you know, take a backseat and take the list, what Vihan's teacher give him, and, you know, try to do our best, but most of the work is done in school.
That's great.
It's a shout-out for his schoolteacher, Ms. Adams.
I'm sure she'll appreciate that, and that's very well deserved, I believe, for all our teachers that are helping train these students, teach these students, and also you guys are just wonderful students. So, one last round of applause. I believe we have another announcement from Dr. Haas. We're moving on, and for those parents and children in attendance, you can feel free to leave anytime. There'll be a little portion before we move into public comment, but don't feel like you have to stay the whole time. It's a several-hour-long meeting.
So, just had a few announcements. One, I don't know if the school board members had gotten a flyer, but the Arts Fest in the West is tomorrow night. It's really nice. I'll pass this around. I mean, it's done at Western Albemarle High School. They have a foundation that supports the art program, and there's all kinds of good stuff, student artwork, music, all kinds of good stuff. And it's at 6 o'clock tomorrow night out at Western. I had a great visit at Greer on Monday with Judy and Kate, and really appreciate Steve Saunders, Wendy Eckerly, and the whole Greer staff for having us to visit. Students were great. I mean, there was a lot of, the way I framed it up when I was talking to them about it was, it was really rigorous work, but it was facilitated in a real environment of care, and not just with the teachers, but they've taught the students really to be caring of each other and to be supportive of each other. And I really, one of the things I appreciated was, I visited five classes, and every single one, the students, the teacher was providing guidance, but the students were really the active participants in the class, using the display board, solving problems, thinking out loud, calling on other students. And I made a comment to Ms. Culbertson, who teaches kindergarten, how amazing it was how the students were leading the class, and she said, "Well, remember, this is the 114th day of school." And so, at the beginning of the year, they weren't where they are now, and it just reminded me, you know, the students, as you all said, I mean, the parents are great partners with us, and you're their first teacher, and then when the students come to school, the teachers take it from there, and it really is just exciting to see, at this point in the year, all the great gains that the students have made. And then I have an update on collective bargaining. So, at the board meeting last Thursday night, the school board voted and then directed me to get to work on a collective bargaining resolution. So I'm just going to share a brief update. I did share this with the board via email last night. So, at the beginning of this week, Ross, our school board legal counsel, arranged for a meeting with Eric Patel, who's the outside counsel, for those two and me on Monday evening to discuss parameters for developing the collective bargaining resolution. And after listening to the board's conversation, particularly during the open meeting, I tried to tailor the plan to the direction I was hearing, and with the understanding that I'm certainly open to input. So, in my aim, the aim that I have and what I expressed to the council was that we have a timeline, so an actual timeline, and being able to manage expectations for completing the draft of the school board's desirables in a resolution. And in addition, I want the process to be a collaborative process. So more concretely, Mr. Patel said that he can have a draft resolution that incorporates several elements from other resolutions he has worked on within six to eight weeks from now. Part of this process will be to flag elements of the draft resolution to indicate other resolutions, as he has found parts of them to be beneficial to the employees and to the boards that he's worked with in the past. Eric and Ross will work together. As the process of making the draft gets near conclusion, Eric and Ross will share the draft with the board for review and feedback. We are aiming for completion between, somewhere between April 17th, the end of April, beginning of May, accounting for spring break in there, that would be about eight weeks, six to eight weeks, as Eric said, that he could accomplish that. So I already feel, I feel pretty good about having that kind of a tight draft timeline. When we have the draft ready, and I keep saying draft, because this is a draft, Ross, I talked to Vernon last night, and we kind of bounced things back and forth, Ross, Eric, and I will meet with AEA Council, Becca, Saxon, and Vernon, and share the drafts. So we've already got the AEA resolution, and then we can share our draft, and from there, that's when the collaboration should begin. We'll share with each other, and then we will commence on a series of biweekly meetings, you know, probably a couple hours, because you've got to get in and talk and work things out, to work out one resolution that we would then ultimately bring to the board for consideration. That allows time in between the meetings to share where we're going with the board, get feedback and input, they can talk to membership, and we can keep going back and forth like that. And just on a side note, the outside counsel, Eric Patel, said that he is embarking on a very similar process with Falls Church right now, because he had found that, you know, in some cases where the employer develops a resolution and just says, "This is the resolution now, you have to argue against it," that causes a lot of unnecessary conflict. And then also, collaborating on it through the process has been something that he wanted to try. So, I think that's where we are right now. I think that it's a good compromise and a balance between just starting out with the AEA resolution versus just starting out with a school board resolution, and also not starting out with a blank piece of paper. But that's where we are right now.
Great. Working together sounds wonderful. That is, does anyone else have any announcements? That leads us to our next item, which is public comment. And I believe that Jono, I mean, Mr. Alcaro, Alcaro will be directing public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. We have four public speakers this evening. We invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to school board governance and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct in the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol. State your name and address or voting district. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. Give any written statements or other supporting materials to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to school board members. And lastly, three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. And there's a little blip in here, a commenter will be required to discontinue the comment after three minutes. After two minutes, a yellow light will shine, and then a red light will shine at the end of three minutes. And our speakers in order will be Andrew West, Paul Regan, Tori Selmer, and Kayden Wright. Mr. West?
Greetings, Albemarle County School Board and attendees. My name is Andrew West, and I'm an eighth-grade English teacher at Henley Middle School and member of EVAC. I'm here today to share my thoughts about the county's decision to move to every-other-day ELA-8 classes. I believe that this is a terrible choice, and seems only to pile more work on teachers when they're already focused on bridging all the gaps COVID and various other stressors have created. Removing dedicated class time from our Language Arts classes does not seem like a path to reducing achievement gaps, improving test scores, or bolstering literacy. ELA-8 teachers have to prepare students for the three days of SOLs they take for our class alone. One of these tests is a test that they have received minimal preparation for in other grades, because they do not take a writing exam in any other grade but eighth. We have half the time to teach, we will have half the time to teach, twice as many students to give feedback to about essays, and twice as many. twice as many students to give feedback to about essays, and twice as many essays that we must grade. We can't hold students accountable for homework that we are increasingly being told not to assign. So when will they read? Twice a week in class? I'm also curious how or why the county is justifying these decisions. The county is certainly not asking their qualified professionals. They think this is a good idea, because they do not. Is there any data to support the claim that this will help students? Will this decision even supposed to help students at all? Is it going to prepare them for high school? How will this improve test scores? How will this improve teacher retention? Will this decision mean that the English teachers will have twice as many classes with half the class size? Unlikely. What is more likely to happen is what has happened with every other class that has moved to every-other-day classes. Teachers will get twice as many classes, and the classes will stay the same size. The special education services will get cut, and collaborative classes will disappear. And as the teacher's workload doubles, but not really, because the teachers will also likely be asked to teach an elective that they haven't been qualified to teach and that students haven't asked for. In the end, what you professionals are left with are questions. When will students get the instruction that they need? What content are we going to cut? Will teachers get twice as many students and extra electives to teach? Or will the schools be hiring more teachers for electives? Will the students who need academic interventions get any of these electives? Or they get stuck in a reading intervention class? Or will students just continue to take on more work and more students with fewer resources, less time, and less support? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I know that Paul Regan is not going to be able to show up today.
Okay, thank you. Tori Selmer.
Good evening. It's me again, Tori Selmer, concerned mom of four from the Whitehall District and teacher to many in the Scottsville District. Two weeks ago, I spoke to you about my concerns as a parent regarding the move to make Math 8 and eighth-grade ELA move to every-other-day classes. Tonight, I speak to you as both a concerned parent and a concerned teacher. After speaking at the last meeting, I was interviewed by CBS 19 News. The segment aired last Monday. On air, ACPS spokesperson Helen Dunn starts by saying, "We always follow the research." As part of the Math 8 DPLC, we have been asking for that data for over a year. The county has yet to supply the specific data they are using to support this decision, not even to the news when asked for it. While not data-driven, I can supply students that have expressed joy over moving from every-other-day to everyday math. Why joy? Because they are finding success in math and have time to do things after school that they enjoy. Ms. Dunn continued to say that it is not a matter of the consecutive minutes, but rather having a good teacher and quality instruction, that the teacher alone is what will predict the outcome for students. Yes, in order for students to be successful, they will need a good teacher, but they also need time. I invite each of you to go to your schools and to talk with your Math 8 teachers. Ask them if they are able to get through the entire curriculum and how their students are doing with the accelerated pacing. Be sure to ask about our diverse learners and how we are supporting those students who need extra time to process or complete tasks. Many algebra and geometry students this year have commented on missing the fun activities that we use to practice. One might argue that students should be doing practice at home, also known as homework. But I invite each of you to talk to the students about how often they complete the homework given to them and the reasons they have for not completing it. Most middle school students do not have the executive functioning to prioritize the homework practice needed to be successful in an every-other-day class. Ms. Dunn commented on how students are going to be successful because they will have exposure to more elective choices. No one has even asked the students what they're interested in learning. And we hear regularly that the elective choices that they want are not available. Now, that might be a school-by-school basis, but it highlights that this change is not good for every student across the county. This is not to mention the fact that if a student is performing below grade level, they will not even get a choice in electives, but they will be placed into a remediation elective to support math and/or ELA needs. This is doing the exact opposite of what the county has said is part of the success of this program. A compromise is warranted. Offer every-other-day classes for students who want it, but do not punish the rest of us by not offering year-long classes for students that need that support. The county has stated in the vision, mission, and values that they value equity and that they will provide every student with the level of support necessary to thrive. By not offering year-long classes and not offering transparency in this decision, they are not honoring this value. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kayden Wright. Hello again.
Hi, I'm Kayden Wright. I'm a student at Albemarle High School. And firstly, I would like to thank the board for accepting collective bargaining. I'm pretty sure everyone here is looking forward to working with you over the next few, well, I mean, pretty much forever. And that said, I wanted to talk. I have a little friend with me today. It's Webster. It's a dictionary. The second edition. I really hate the third edition. Here, let me see. I should have paid more attention to English. Here we are. H-Y-P-O-C-O-R-I-S-M. Hypocrisyism. The use of hypocrisysims or hypocrisy, the practice of expressing feelings, beliefs, or virtues one does not hold or possess. Career learning communities are the perfect example of hypocrisy in Albemarle County public schools. I am a career learning community student myself, although I really didn't know until it was too late to stop. And it changes everything about education, and not in a good way. Under career learning communities, students will have to be transported from high school to high school in a way that isn't effective with this division's strategic plan. It's not equitable to force students to be able to provide their own transportation by being able to arrive at school early in the morning to participate in these programs. It's almost offensive to plan to build more centers and more academies, while many schools are still claiming to be unsupported and underfunded. The process of career learning communities itself directly contradicts with another one of division's strategic goals, which is affirming and empowering communities. The easiest way to destroy a school's community is to remove its students, and career learning communities does exactly that by sending them somewhere else every other day. Career learning communities will not create thriving students. It will not affirm and empower communities, and it does not spread resources equitably or transformatively. What I'm saying is, career learning communities is hypocrisy. You heard it from Webster. Please, you have a chance to change this, and please reconsider the career learning communities program while you still have a chance. You're about to send students into schools that they're unfamiliar with with programs that are unsupported and underprepared. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chair, back to you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Next up is school board or superintendent business. I know sometimes that gets confused with the announcements. Do we have any additional school board, superintendent business? That brings us to school division business, and we have Patrick, Mr. McLaughlin, presenting our mid-year, is it data or data, update.
What do you think? What would you prefer, Chair Coulson?
Data.
I usually say data. Data. I probably use them interchangeably. So give me one second. Let me get my notes up here.
All right. I was thinking the other night as I was getting prepared. It's been a while since I've had a chance to give a presentation to the board, so it's good to see you all again. I'm Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the School Division. And I'm here tonight to provide a brief overview and reminder on the school accreditation process, a review of our formative mid-year assessment data, and an overview of how teachers and schools use this data to improve instructions and outcomes. So let's get started. All of the work that we do in the School Division is grounded in the mission of Albemarle County Public Schools. And I'd like to focus your attention specifically on the first sentence of our mission for tonight's work, that working together as a team, we will end the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities for our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. Our mission is our highest priority as a school district, and one of the most important measures of that progress toward the mission is the school accreditation process. As we've previously discussed together, when our schools meet the standards for state academic accreditation, that indicates to us that achievement gaps are closing or have closed, which would allow us to fulfill our mission. And so to frame the work tonight, I'd like to provide a very brief reminder to the board about the school accreditation process. A school's accreditation status is determined using several indicators, including academic achievement in math, English, and science, achievement gap scores in math and English, and chronic absenteeism. In addition, our high schools have three more indicators, the graduation completion index, the dropout rate, and the college, career, and civic readiness index. And each of these indicators is given a yearly rating of Level 1, Level 2, or Level 3. Based on those indicators, a school can achieve three different levels of accreditation. The first is accredited, in which all school quality indicators are either at a Level 1 or Level 2. There's accredited with conditions for schools that have one or more school quality indicators at Level 3. And then there's a rating of accreditation denied, and that's for schools that fail to adopt or fully implement corrective action to address their Level 3 indicators. Common formative assessments are a key tool for determining the impact of and making revisions to our instructional practices. In addition to some of the common assessments that are created by all of our PLCs and our teachers at the school level, Albemarle County also uses a common mid-year division assessment for the subjects that you see here. We have created these assessments to mimic end-of-year SOL assessments with similar questions and question types. Tonight's focus will be on our reading, math, and science results, which are the measures of school accreditation and also the major focus of our mid-year review process with our schools. We'll be looking at the aggregate data for the division in these areas, so let's get started. This first chart allows us to take a look at our progress this year compared to years past. Current year results are represented by the green bar and last year's results represented by the blue. You can see here that our results this year at the mid-year on our common assessments are higher in math, a bit lower in reading, and lower in science when compared to last year's mid-year assessments. It's important to note that where we are at the mid-year will not be where we are at the end of the year. As you likely recall from our work session in September, once SOL tests are completed, an unadjusted pass rate and a growth-adjusted pass rate are calculated for schools. This chart allows us to take a look at the progress this year compared to previous years. For example, the blue bar indicates where we were on our math assessments at mid-year of last school year. The red bar indicates our unadjusted pass rate for math that year. The yellow bar indicates our growth-adjusted pass rates for math that year. And the green bar indicates our current year mid-year county assessment results. So you can see in math that we went up on our unadjusted pass rate and up further on our growth-adjusted pass rate, and our mid-year pass rate is a bit higher than it was last year. The same held true in reading, but our mid-year scores so far this year are a bit lower. And you can see the same thing in science. It's important to note that the assessments we use in math and reading these past two years are very similar to each other. And we hope that these begin to provide some predictive data for us, but it'll likely take a few more years to see if these are really great predictors of final outcomes. This year, however, you'll notice that our science tests have a significant shift from the type of tests students took last year. Those mid-year assessments are completely different. And so I want to show you just an example of the shift that's taking place in our science tests. Here's an example of a question from a fifth-grade science test that we used in years past. It's a pretty straightforward question. It asks, "In which direction will the ball go after, will the ball most likely go after it hits the wall?" There's four questions underneath that students can pick from to answer, and who thinks they know it? No takers? All right. So it's this one right here. It's going to come back at a kind of an opposite angle as to where it hit. So pretty straightforward question there. This is one of the more simplistic questions that we saw traditionally in our science tests. This question outlines how the science tests, how the science assessments have changed this year. The test will include several items known as cluster questions. These questions begin with a set of readings, data, and illustrations that students use to answer a set of questions in the test. After reading through this reference set, students would answer three to six questions that are similar to this one. Select two changes the class can make to the investigation to show what work is being done. You'll notice a couple of things here, that students have to pick multiple answers from that, and they have to go back and look at a couple of different pieces of information from the initial information to make their answer. For this one, for those who want to see the answers, it's place a mass in front of the vehicle for it to push and attach a small load in the back of the vehicle for it to pull. If you don't pick both of those, you don't get credit for the question, and it counts as a wrong answer for you. And I shared this with the board tonight because it's unlikely that we can draw many comparisons between last year's science tests and this year's science tests. However, in reading and math, we think that we can, because those tests are very similar to each other. And so I'd like to spend some time tonight digging in a little bit to where we are currently with our reading and math. First, we'll look at reading. Our division results for grades three through our end-of-course test in 11th grade are about six points lower overall than where we were at the mid-year point last year. When this is broken down to show the results at our elementary, our middle, and our high school level, you can see that we are about 4% lower in our elementary schools, about 8% lower in our middle schools, and about 3% lower in our high schools. And as you might suspect, these results carry over to our membership groups as well. In this chart, you can see the breakdown by membership groups with differences ranging from 3.5% lower than last year to about 12% lower than last year. Our math results showed a slight increase in the pass rate from last year to this year, from 51.2 to 52.8. And when we break this down by the school level, we see that we saw it actually go down about three points in elementary, up by about seven points in our middle schools, and down by about three points in our high schools. When you look at our membership, you see a little bit of a mixed bag with anywhere from a decrease of 2.9% to an increase of 5.5%. And so the question that always brings up is, why do we see these results? What's going on that's giving us these indications? And here's where it gets a little complicated. I'm going to try, I'm going to put a caveat on this slide. I was working on this one over the past couple of days. And this one's a little tricky, but I'll certainly be happy to come back to it and take some questions at the end. So when we think about why, first I'll say the answer is different for each of our schools. But we've been able to perform some analytics on our results, which resulted in some interesting findings. So much like the way the Department of Education reports our assessment results, we report results for our mid-year review in one of two categories, passing or not passing. Those are the numbers that you saw tonight. Here's how many kids are passing reading. Here's how many kids are passing math. When we break down our assessment results, we actually break them down into three categories. One is met target. The other is near target. Both of those groups, when you meet or you're near the target on the mid-year, typically pass their assessment at the end of the year. And then the third is progressing. And so what we found for those groups, I'd like to share with you tonight. So when we look at our analysis and we look at our highest-performing students, these are the students who likely were least impacted by the effects of the pandemic and came back to us already on or near grade level. For the most part, they remained high performers when they were in, this is a fourth grade to fifth grade comparison. When they were in fourth grade, they mastered the fourth grade standards, and they did fine on their SOL test. When these kids were in fifth grade, they're mastering the fifth grade standards, and they're doing well. You don't see much growth for these students. They all kind of stayed at the same high level where they're above that bar and they're passing. Our students in the progressing category tended to be the students who came back to us with the most learning loss following the pandemic. And quite frankly, when those students came back, they were performing at levels that I think were even lower than many of us anticipated. These students consistently showed the most growth on our reading assessments from one year to the next. But many of them started at such a low point that even with that growth, they didn't get above the bar to passing, if that makes sense. And then the final group, but you can see they had about a 4.3% growth rate. they had about a 4.3% growth rate, whereas our kids who were already passing had about a .3. And then our final group is our near-target students. And these are the students who are kind of right in the middle. And while these students did, on average, show growth, not all of them did. And any negative change in the test likely moved that student from just over the passing line, where they started, to just under the passing line, where they're counted as a failure for us at the midyear review. We believe, based on our analysis, that this group is really what is impacting most those pass rates in English and those pass rates in math. That the students who are in this bar, who continued to do well, didn't really help our passing rate. But if a student fell below the line, it brought our failure rate up a little bit, if that makes sense. So again, I know that this is a tried my best to visualize it. We'll come back to it if you want to at the end. But I'd also say that these students here are also the students who receive the majority of our Tier One and Tier Two interventions, you know? So I think that's a positive, that we are seeing some growth with those students. And so I've got a couple more slides to wrap things up, and we can come back. I see Chair Coulson.
Well, I'm wondering if we could take a maybe it's just me, but do clarifying questions?
Of course, sure.
It looks like this is the end of the graph, sort of.
Yep.
Does anyone have clarifying questions they need about the graph? Okay, maybe it was just me. That, this bar graph, are these based on actual numbers?
And I'm sorry, this is not to scale. This is, I just tried to, what I was trying to show here was that last year, all of the kids in this category were below the line. This year, they grew. If everyone, if you look at this as the starting point, right? That everyone kind of started here. This was the lowest they could get. Some of those kids got above the passing bar. Most of them are better in fifth grade than they are stronger in fifth grade than they were in fourth grade on their midyear test. But even though they showed that growth, they didn't get to a passing score. But these students showed more growth than any of their peer groups. I don't know if that helped clarify.
And how did you, that's quantified from the data?
That's quantified from a, and I know our statisticians aren't here tonight, but I think it's called a paired t-test that they run using some SPSS software, comparing last year's results to this year's results for the same cohort of students.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other clarifying questions?
Great. Alright, so, last couple of things I want to share with you is kind of the, what does this all mean, right? So I'll start by saying that these results indicate where our students were at the midpoint of this year. And it's important to note that that's not where they'll end up. The reason for this is that our midyear assessments are formative assessments. They're designed to monitor student learning and provide ongoing feedback. They're designed to help to target specific areas that need additional work. And they're low stakes. They're not tied to test grades or to verified credits or to things like that. They're designed to ultimately get students to do well on that second column, their summative assessments. And I think there's really three key takeaways at this point of the year. Number one, the results show us where the students are at the midpoint. Number two, we're still a little unsure if we have predictive validity from the formative to the summative. We really only have one year of data to show us that. As we start to get multiple years of data where we're looking at the same thing, we'll know a little bit better. That helps us with our assessment design as well. But I think what's most important as a takeaway is that we checked this progress at the midyear point, and this allows us to focus our instruction during the second semester. And I'd specifically like to speak to that bullet for just a little bit. So when these results come in, each school conducts an analysis, and then they come down and they present what we call a midyear review report to central staff. They do this with their, with their staffs at their school as well. And the answer to why we see results in a certain way from schools really are different from school to school. But the principals bring us a report that indicates what practices they see that are really working in their schools that they want to make sure continue, and which practices they'll either modify or begin implementing if they need to see improvement. For example, this is a slide from one of our elementary schools that came into midyear review whose reading scores were better this year than they were last year. And so this principal said, "Here's what I attribute that to. I think it was our weekly extended PLC sessions that focused on exit slips and math investigations strategies. I think it was our approach to SEL and responsive classroom. I think it was an improvement in our daily attendance, and I think it was a focus on high-yield instructional strategies." So at this school, that principal says, "This is what's working for us. This has got us in a better place than it was a year ago. What my main role right now is to make sure that continues throughout the year. We don't take our foot off the gas with that." The second example is from a school that was performing a little bit lower than they were on last year's midyear test. And so this principal has identified some things that she says, "Hey, we need to either reset or restart here at the school." And so she's identified after-school tutoring programs in reading and in math. She's identified monitoring SIPs implementation, which is a Tier One reading intervention for stu, which is a reading intervention for students. And you see in both columns, she said, "I'm going to reassess and regroup intervention students based on our midyear data." That's one of the common themes that you see in a lot of the reports that come our way. And so, while that's the school level, we've also got tools that help teachers and PLC groups at their level to really figure out how to focus their instruction, how to focus their remediation plans for the second half of the year. We use a tool called Illuminate Education. We can load, we load all of our midyear assessments in there. Students take them on the computer. And what Illuminate allows us to do is really dig into the data to answer that question of why we're seeing this. So I'll give you a couple of examples of tools that our teachers use. One way that Illuminate helps us visualize data is through a report on each specific SOL standard. In this report, on the left-hand column, you see the standards for fifth-grade math. Number Sense 5.1, Number Sense 5.2A, Number Sense 5.2B down there. Teachers can click, you can't do it in this, it's just a screenshot, but teachers, when they go into Illuminate, can click on that, and it'll bring up the text of the standard. It'll tell them what that standard is that they're assessing. These rows to the right indicate the percentage of students who took that, who answered that question, who didn't master it, or who answered questions around that standard, who either didn't master it or did master it. Teachers can click on either one of these bars, and it'll bring up a list of students. So if a teacher is worried about Number Sense 5.3B, they can say, "Man, about 72% of my kids got that, but I want to see who the 27% are who didn't get it." So that way, I can know that I need to focus some instruction around that standard with these students. A second useful report that I'll show you is our response distribution report. And what this report shows is results for each question on an assessment with green bars indicating the percentage of students who answered that question correctly and pink indicating those who got the question wrong. So this takes it from the standard level down to the individual question level. Below the chart, you can see the, teachers can see the response frequency for each answer to a particular question. And that can give some insights into why students who got it wrong are not answering correctly. So I'm going to give you an example with this one. I know it's a little bit hard to see on the screen. Question 36 at the top. If you come over here, you see that 170 students got this question correct. 780 students got this question incorrect. These are division results. That's why you see the number so large. The correct answer for this question was B. 170 students got that right. But if you look closely, you see that 467 picked D and 184 picked A on that question. So that says, "Well, let's see the question and see what, why in the world they might answer like that." So if a teacher comes down here and clicks on question 36, it brings it up. And what this question says, it's about the area, finding the area of a triangle. It's, "What is the area of a right triangle with a base of four feet and a height of eight feet?" And I'm sure, as all of you know, the formula for finding the area of a triangle is one-half base times the height. So to get this question correct, you multiply eight times four, and then you multiply it by, you divide it by two, or you multiply it by .5. Those give you the same result. And you should get 16 square feet as the result. The most common incorrect answer was 32 square feet. What do you think those kids did wrong? Well, I hear you, yep.
They forgot to divide by two?
That's exactly right. They didn't have the formula right. They knew I had to multiply these together, but I didn't know I had to divide it by two. The second most common incorrect answer was 12 square feet. What do you think those kids did? They added them up. That's right. So they said, "I think the area of a triangle you get by adding these two numbers together." And so teachers can come in here. They can click on all the kids who answered D, and they can group those students and say, "Alright, let's talk about area of a triangle again. Tell me how you did this." They'll find out that they multiplied the two together. They forgot to do the division on it. And then hopefully, they can build that skill. They'd probably be doing different work with the students who answered A, who added the two numbers together. They'd put those students together. They'd say, "Hey, let's take a look at this problem, and let's figure out why that doesn't work for finding the area of a triangle." And so, teachers have a lot of tools. Teachers use these, principals use these. We look at them when we have our midyear review that really help us to target instruction and to figure out some of those answers to why students aren't getting things correct. And so, what happens now? What do we do next between now and the end of the year? Well, there's a number of things, and I've listed just a few of them. The first is that principals have identified practices that are working with students and practices that need to be adjusted. We saw a couple of examples of that. Teachers and PLCs have reviewed their midyear data, and they're using that data to focus their instructional strategies for the second half of the year. Schools continue to give common assessments to gauge the impact of their instruction and make adjustments. And actually, this year, we're going to have a third-quarter division common assessment that we're asking schools to give in reading and math, so we can see where things are come April, just before we go into our end-of-year testing. And then division staff are going to be meeting with schools to review data throughout SOL testing in May. And so, tonight's presentation was designed to give you a snapshot of where we are, to let you know a little bit about why we think we are there and to share with you some examples about how folks from central office on down to the classroom level use this to provide some focus to our work as we go into the second half of the year and as we strive to meet that mission of ending the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities on student success. So, I thank you all for your time. I'm happy to go back to anything or answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question on the slide about how we use midyear data response distribution, the pink and green graph. I think this is really cool because you can see where you're not teaching well or which students aren't getting it. My concern is, do teachers actually have the time to work with the students that don't get it because of X and don't get it because of Y? I mean, and I know you're not a teacher in the classroom doing this, but I do have that concern.
Well, what I can certainly speak to is the analysis. And that's what our professional learning communities are all about. So when this, when any assessment is given, sorry, stepped away from the mic. When any assessment is given, time spent in PLC is used to look at the data and start kind of sussing out these areas of focus for instruction. And then they build an instructional plan based on that. In terms of grouping and regrouping, I think that's a pretty common practice, particularly, I'm going to step a little out of my comfort zone with elementary school instruction. But I think if you walked into just about any of our elementary school math classes, you would see kids working on different pieces in different groups. Sometimes working with the teacher to get some direct instruction on what they need, sometimes working with other students to practice and build those skills.
And at the secondary level, all of our schools have an advisory period. Part of the role of that advisory period is to provide time for our teachers to pull in students that need extra time and support. So even when I was principal at Albemarle High School, we didn't have all this technology. Teachers would do the common assessments. They would sort papers, view spreadsheets. And then during our intervention period at the high school, they would, if I had, you know, Jono early in the day, and we had the intervention period at the end of the day, I'd give him a pass and say, "Hey, Jono, I need you to come back. We're going to work a little bit on doing area for a triangle." He and five or six other kids would come in. I could spend some time with them. We'd get it straightened out, give him another assessment at the end of the week to see if he's got it.
I would, on that question, say I had the same kind of thought in that I think that's the highest level. That's like aspirational, where you're breaking it down by question, by student. And I think that's probably where teacher retention and professional learning around classroom management really comes into play because I remember struggling as a new teacher with looking at this and then being able to effectively manage a classroom of students and say, "I'm going to give you something differentiated from you, differentiated from you," is a big ask. So I don't, I know that's the goal, but I, you know, I know that's not happening for every teacher in every classroom because classrooms are hard to manage. So, two cents on that question.
Well, just to follow up on this one, then I have another one. I mean, do the students get to see the answers? And do they get to digest this themselves as well? Because these are fourth and fifth graders. They're pretty sophisticated learners.
Students can see their results.
Right, right. That's not very helpful. We know that.
Do you mean, do students see this report?
Well, do they see what the right answer was and which one they got wrong? I mean, that's how you, do they?
Yes. I'd say that it's rare that we give an assessment that we don't go review it with students after the assessment and talk to them about what, how they did.
What the right answer was, yeah. Back to the science, the dip in the science scores. I mean, you explained it as a change in the format and maybe the difficulty of the questions. So, so did every school division see that dip, A? And B, it seems to me, the way the questions are structured, there's both the content that needs to be taught, but also a different approach to answering the questions.
Absolutely. And so, this is our internal midyear results, so we don't have any comparators outside of the division for this. One of the things that we are, that we are doing is we're taking the, all of the items that we put together in the science assessment. It was pretty much all of those cluster questions. And we've created PowerPoints for our fifth-grade teachers to use so that they can spend some time saying, "Hey, remember this one? Let's take a look at, let's talk through just some of those things like we were just discussing. What is this question really asking? Where's the data point that you would go to find the information you need to answer the question? And what's the correct answer there?" So, that's something that we've been shipping out to schools. I don't know if it's out yet, but it'll be, it is out. But they all have that and are doing exactly what you just described with their students.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, a basic question. But would you just explain the difference again between formative assessments and summative?
Sure. So formative are really used to, aren't designed to be the endpoint of learning, the way a summative is. So when you think about it as your final exam in college, right? When you go and you take that, high stakes is going to count for a big portion of your grade. You get one shot at it, and that's it, and your professor's going to give you an A, B, C, or a D, or an F on it, and move on. All of the work that you did, that you got feedback on up until that point, is formative. So if that professor gave you an assessment, they said, "Hey, we're not going to grade this one. I just want to see where you are. I want to provide you some feedback." That's a formative assessment. Low stakes, designed to help both the teacher and the student identify what their areas of strength are, what their areas of weakness are, so that they can focus on those, and by the time a summative assessment rolls around, they can do better on it.
Okay, I have a question on, I think, was it called Luminate?
Luminate, yep.
Okay. That does break down the data so that the student, individual students can be identified as to who had the question wrong.
That's right. So if I clicked on this number right here, 467, it would bring up the names of all 467 students who answered D on that question. So obviously, when teachers go in here, they only see their students. So they would see a much smaller number in there, could pull it up, could see the students that they teach.
Okay. And on the example of the science question that you showed to us, which branch of science was that taken from, or which?
So that was from the fifth-grade science test, which is, you know, science is a little bit different than reading and math, where we test science at fifth grade and eighth grade, and the fifth grade and eighth grade tests are cumulative. Fifth grade covers third, fourth, and fifth grade science standards, and eighth grade covers sixth, seventh, and eighth grade science standards. When you get into the high school, it's course-specific, biology or science chemistry. So you can see standards from anywhere from third to fifth grade on that fifth-grade science test.
And all of the tests were changed this year?
All the science tests. That's right, this year. So we haven't seen them yet, but we've been given some kind of previews from the DOE about what to expect on them, and that's what we've built those cluster questions around.
Thanks.
Going back to the science, again, on slide 11, we have the historical data. And I understand the difference between the mid-year '22 and mid-year '23. But what happened with science at the end of last year?
It wasn't a good predictor for us. You know, it just was the, I would say that the math and the reading last year proved to be, I think, better predictive assessments for us, and science didn't. I think there's probably a number of reasons that we could opine about that. I do think science, to the question Kate asked earlier, last year's science test, we did see some lower results throughout the state, and that held true for us as well. I think probably one of the most significant impacts that we saw there is that for our fifth and eighth grade science, it was covering those three years of standards for kids who had missed a good portion of those two years before they took the test, right? They were doing science at home on Zoom, things like that. I can't say that for sure, but if I had to put an opinion out there, I'd say that was a significant factor.
Thank you.
I have a question or two. For math, you talked about the illumination. I know when we were having our work session with the math specialist, there was a mention of how map testing had gone away. Map testing, I think I'm a little bit more familiar with. So is this illuminate, illuminations, illuminate education supposed to be a substitute for that?
No. So the map test went away. So as you all likely know, this year, in grades three through eight, two additional state tests have come into play. We call those growth tests, that students take in reading and math at the beginning of the year, halfway through the year, and then they take their end-of-year SOL test at the end. With those coming on board, we thought they were going to be much more useful for us in terms of a formative assessment than they turned out to be. We thought we were going to be able to take that data, really dig into what it told us about the students, and make adjustments to instruction because of that. Turns out that it really doesn't help us that much. For example, we can't see what questions got asked on those tests. We just know that, and students don't all take the same, don't all get the same question. It's a computer adaptive test. And so, but back to your original question, we decided to stop map testing this year because we thought that the growth tests were going to give us the information that MAP typically gave us. And so now, we've got a, the question we've got to think about is, if we bring back map testing, what does that make our assessment calendar look like? Because we know we've got these state tests we have to give through the state. We've got our division assessments, which we think are pretty helpful to us. And what would it look like if we put MAP in there as well?
Okay, so maybe the piece I'm missing is because MAP's not just testing for testing, it's testing for instructional change to get to things, but is that being, that's being filled by this illuminate education?
Yes. That's what I'd say. Our common assessments help us to do that. They, you know, it's a little bit different reporting. You know, MAP had the, oh, I think it was called the RIT score that came out of it. But yes, that mid-year assessment that you saw is designed to tell us, here's what we taught, here's what, here's how well kids are doing on what we taught, and here's what we need to come back to or adjust in our pacing.
Okay, my other question, so I guess you're still in consideration. I guess we're going to see, well, what's, if the benchmarks weren't as helpful as we thought, are we just going to start relying on our own assessments? Is there any talk about having MAP come back?
We haven't specifically talked about MAP, but we are having some conversation around, what are our assessments, do we have enough of them? Do we give them often enough to really gauge where kids are? So that's a continuing conversation. We can certainly update the board if we make any decisions around that.
So do we know if teachers have an opinion on which of those assessments are most useful to them?
I do not.
Well, that's, I was just going to address that. I think where I'm like, just kind of listening to the questions, I'm starting to have questions of my own. But I do think that what we should do is get teachers involved around the decision-making with the MAP test. But also, in a good situation, like, you know, the best-case scenario situation, what we would do is in the summertime, we would compensate teachers to come in, use the banks that we have to develop a first-quarter common assessment that they would see value in, and see by developing the assessment and hitting the standards that they want to hit, then they know what the test is going to look like, and they had a hand in developing it, just like their own classroom assessments. If a teacher develops an assessment, then they do the instruction that goes with it, and then they've planned with the end in mind, they know what it is. And I'd like for us to build that capacity and move forward with that, because when this model of professional learning community is really humming, it is the, it's the teachers working together, developing assessments. That way, they really work on their assessment literacy, which is something that if you don't use it, you lose it. You know, you can get rusty with it. They're good at it. And don't get me wrong, I think our teachers make good assessments. But working together, they can identify, and this is good summer work to do, because then they can map it out for the first quarter, first semester, third quarter. And then that way, the other part is, the assessments wouldn't be as long, because you could hit the first-quarter benchmark. I'm still up in the, I mean, I'm also just up in the air about the MAP assessment. There were some issues with it. It did take up a lot of time to do, to provide those assessments. The other thing was, in many places around the county, it was used to sort and select students out of classes that they might have been able to go in and be successful just on the basis of a MAP assessment score. So a student got in whatever range, the teacher would say, "Oh, this student doesn't belong in this class", and have them placed someplace else, when they might have been successful through effort. The other piece was that, I think one of the things that's hurt us over time is that educators across the board would come in and say, "Well, the students are growing. They're growing according to the results on the MAP assessment." The principals would say it, everybody would say it. But because they're not perfectly aligned with the SOL testing, they could grow, and they could grow all they want, but if they're not in alignment with the SOL testing, it won't show up on what our end-of-course result is. And which all really comes back to the whole issue of high-stakes testing, you know? It is, it's something we've got to deal with. We try to find the value in it. We try to use ways to do formative assessments so that, you know, teachers have something to work with with their students to know what their deficits are. It goes well with the standards. But at the end of the day, as you could see, you know, sometimes it just blows me away when I look at a chart like that, because, like the one that had the pink and the blue on it, because as you know, the SOL testing is a curriculum that's a mile wide and an inch deep. And so teachers, like one of you said, is a teacher going to be able, you know? I don't know how they do it. I really don't. What we've got to be able to do is give them enough time to work on things, but also break it into pieces. So doing like a first-quarter assessment, a semester assessment, third quarter, make it brief. And then the teachers work on their own teams to develop weekly exit slips, things like that, so that it's, assessment becomes part of the instructional model and not an occasion. You know, there's a lot to be said for providing some instruction, assessing, and then feedback being the biggest piece of the work that you do till students get it right. So I think we've made a lot of progress with this work, but we do need to go back and keep having conversations about what assessments we're going to rely on and how do we make it manageable for teachers so that they have time to do the, what's the most important thing is to take the next steps after they can see the results. Because as I was saying earlier, we used to spend just a lot of time, you know, grading stuff and putting it in stacks. And now, at least they've got the data, but it can be pretty overwhelming without the time that they need to look at it.
So I have two quick comments. I know we're running up to our break time, so I'll make them comments instead of questions. I am somewhat concerned or just curious about how we let people formulate responses to their test results, because I guess the, I did have time to finish all questions. Mainly just, so this is concerning if we're seeing that our reading scores, in particular, our reading scores look like they've dropped a lot. I don't know how statistically significant that is. I don't know if there tends to be variations between grade levels. Like sometimes maybe you have a really advanced grade level, like depending on the students in that grade. I don't know how significant that is, but that seems like a significant drop. And so I'm worried, because we already had really bad, not really bad. We had dropping reading scores, so am I to expect that we're going to have a bigger drop this year? So I'd want to make sure that whatever interventions we're doing are really targeted. And you did speak to that, my comment, it just struck me that I would think there'd be like some ways we could push in if we're worried versus like asking principals to come up with solutions for these scores. It seems a little bit like reinventing the wheel, but maybe not. Maybe it's providing people, our schools autonomy to craft solutions that work for them, but-
There's a balance on that, and I'm leaning more toward pushing in. I'm looking at schools right now and putting them in the tiers, just like we do with students. And, you know, I think we've probably got one tier-three school that we're going to push right into. And then there's, we have another meeting to talk about who's in tier-two, and not pushing the same way with the same, I guess, assertiveness. But to, we're not going to just say, "Okay, you came in for mid-year review, you told us what you're going to do. Now, you know, we'll see you when we do the third-quarter assessment." There were, you know, there were many schools that held their ground and had some improvements over last year. And there's a small handful of schools, and they can change the results for everybody, that didn't do so well, and we're going to be pushing into them. We're not just going to say, you know, "We'll see you at the end of the race."
Yeah, I mean, that was going to be one of my questions, is, is that something, are you working internally about, I mean, we talked about this in how we're doing our, because some of the resources around reading and special education, but, you know, is that something that we could see some more details on regarding where those schools are falling out? Just knowing if, potentially, if there's any changes that could come down the Pike Dune accreditation that could, that could make that even more, you know, difficult? You know, because, I mean, we all agree, like, these scores are not where we want them for the kids. You, and the staff is doing everything they can. But, you know, are there some things that we can do at the division level to provide those resources, those curriculum, those supports for teachers, particularly in those communities that have the most need? Because we've got to get these scores, like, you know, we've got to get these scores out.
Well, what we're finding is that, you know, the resources that are provided are more than adequate. But what we are finding, like, we recently had the Being a Reader come and do walks of all of our schools to determine the fidelity of practice among the teachers, and it's not there.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, I mean, but at the schools and in individual classrooms, where the teacher's using the Being a Reader, which is a phonics-based curriculum, they're getting better results. I mean, I could, I'm not going to, but I can name individual teachers around the county. They use it with fidelity. They're also culturally responsive teaching certified, and they're getting good results. So I think it's from the board level and from my level, it's to, I hate to say it, but to tighten up. Keep tightening up. I mean, I know people want autonomy, but autonomy, complete autonomy is how we've gotten where we are. So it's, if you're not, if you're not using math investigations, or if you're a principal of a school where you're not ensuring by walking around and checking, we need you to do that. We've been saying it. You know, I know that, for the last 15 years, we've been saying, "Use math investigations." So it's time to just get tight. You know, and I didn't want to get there, but that's where we've got to be.
One question that's sort of sideways, and I know you wanted to take a break. One of the things that we did was try to make our summer program more robust. Do we, is the N of the, is, are the numbers too small to see if the incoming assessments or the growth assessments are any better for those kids? Or are we building any metrics to see the impact of a more concentrated?
We have not tried to isolate students who participated in the summer program last year, but I think we could.
Yeah. I mean, I would be very interested in that, because we've talked about expanding that program. You know, we all know about learning loss in the summer and all that. But I would love to have some more data, or at least a plan for getting more data.
We, the other part, I talked to the board about overhauling summer school, and so we're done now with our plan for that, and we're starting to advertise for teachers. So there's a Google Doc that has it all mapped out, so I'll get that and send it out to the board just to read, because it's very detailed.
Detailed in terms of the intensity of the instruction when they're there, what students to identify and-
How do I, you know, in the past, okay, well, let's forget the past. But moving forward, there's very specific identification criteria for students to attend summer school, as opposed to saying, you know, let the principals just kind of pick who they want to have come in, and then have it be open to anybody else that wants to come in, which automatically changes the whole nature of the program, because the instruction gravitates to the easier kids to work with. And offering much higher pay so that we get seasoned teachers, and we're not hiring people that are just coming off, you know, out of college to teach our students that need the most help. There's a number of things that we were able to just look at at low-hanging fruit that we can change. The last piece we're working on right now is identifying a reading assessment and a math assessment that is sensitive enough to pick up, you know, 20 days of instruction or 16 days of instruction and say, "Did it make a difference?" But I don't, I don't want to run a program in the summer and not have an assessment at the beginning and then have one at the end, so we know the juice was worth the squeeze. But we'll still be inviting about 3,000 students, right, Debbie? About 3,000, based on Craig Domer and Chris Gilman put together criteria around the students where they are with their performance right now, based on mid-year. And they've got a band of kids, about 3,000. The other project that Debbie's working on, that she proposed, was for students that really need intensive reading instruction, not having them necessarily come in just for the summer school program, but have, they're talking now to reading interventionists about pushing out into, like, the clubhouse at Mallside and the different places to meet those students where they are to do one-on-one or small group tutoring in the summer with reading. So we've really, we've studied it, we're, you know, we've made new plans. Summer school would be dramatically different this summer than it's been in the past.
We may need to add a little bit of science in there, too.
Well, those science questions are good questions.
They are, yep.
I hope there's not a kabbillion of them like that on the test, because the kids won't talk about-
Half a kabbillion, I think.
I was just talking, I said, "How was your day today?" Tell them what you said.
I had a SOL today, and they're retiring. That's basically it.
And you're a high school student, so again, got a lot of work to do. But we're working on it, and Pat's doing a heck of a job.
On that note, thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. I will also note for, we're about to take a break, but I'll note for school board members, I'm beating a dead horse. I don't have the good, cool saying, squeezing juice lemons, but-
Two different connotations to lemons and juice.
Yeah, I would like to note, though, that this is our second agenda item that's been focused on student achievement, and that is to meet our board goal of having at least, I think, four agenda-related topics specific to student achievement, which is tied to having a higher-performing school division. So I hope this has been a meaningful conversation. Continue if you have other ideas around student achievement. I think it fills. So having our tiered support was our first one, it's our second one, and I'm looking forward to at least two more. And now we have a break, so we will be back at 8:08. Next are 45 seconds. For everyone to exit who didn't need to be here. We are now on to our finance portion of our meeting. One second while I find my agenda. Um, we'll have the comprehensive annual financial report, Mr. Zimmerman.
Uh, good evening, school board. Um, my name is Jackson Zimmerman, I'm your school finance officer. I'd like to introduce this, this evening, uh, we will have David Foley, a partner with Robinson Farmer Cox Associates, our longtime auditors. And he is the partner in charge of the school board's portion of the audit. So, Mr. Foley.
Thank you, Jackson. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, glad to be here with you, uh, this evening. Uh, again, my name is David Foley, I'm a partner with Robinson Farmer Cox Associates. And I was a partner in charge of the, um, school board's fiscal year 22 audit. Um, and we have, uh, completed that audit and so just here to present, uh, the results, uh, of that to you all. Um, I actually met with the audit committee, um, a couple of months ago and went through the audit, um, in detail. Um, met with them for about an hour, hour and a half. So, um, tonight I'll just give you a very brief overview, the brief presentation, um, just hit the main highlights. Um, so the, it's the audit that we do for the, the county and the school board, um, really has three main pieces to it. One, of course, we audit the, the financial statements to make sure that the financial statements, um, for the school board are, uh, prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Um, and then the other two pieces of the audit we do, we do in accordance with government auditing standards. Um, one of those is in addition to just looking at the numbers themselves, um, we review the, uh, internal controls that the school board, um, has over its, uh, financial, uh, reporting. Um, so as, as part of the audit, we'll look at those controls and we'll, we'll, um, perform a test of those controls. Um, and then the third, uh, piece of the audit that we do is the federal compliance audit. Um, so for the major federal programs of both the county and the school board, um, basically OMB has a compliance supplement that lists all the various, uh, compliance requirements that the county and school board have to comply with when they're carrying out and expending, uh, their federal grant programs. So as part of the audit, we'll go through basically that checklist to make sure that the school board is complying with those, uh, federal grant compliance. Um, so those are the three main pieces of the audit that we do, uh, for the county. So as such, included in the, um, annual financial report are three different, uh, reports from us, uh, that communicate the results of the audit. Um, the first is on a PDF, uh, page 27. Um, this is our independent auditor's report. Um, and in this report is where we state we did perform an audit on the, um, county and school board's financial statements. And this is where we issue, um, our opinion on the financial statements. Um, which we have issued a, uh, unmodified opinion on the school board's financial statements, uh, which an unmodified opinion is the cleanest opinion an auditor can give on the set of financial statements. Um, basically an unmodified opinion means that the, uh, county and school board's financial statements, um, have been prepared in accordance with generally accepted, uh, accounting principles. Um, the other two reports, uh, from us are in the back of the report and it, back in the compliance section. And that starts on PDF, um, page 221. Uh, the first report back here is our, uh, report, um, over the, uh, county and school board's internal controls over its, uh, uh, financial reporting. Um, this report was clean as well. Uh, we noted, uh, no, um, significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the, uh, school board, school board's internal control over financial reporting. But we feel overall that the school board has, uh, strong internal controls over its, uh, financial reporting. And then the third and final report from us is a couple of pages over, starting on PDF page 223. Um, this is our report over the school board's compliance, uh, with its, uh, major federal grant programs. Um, this report was clean as well. Uh, there were no, uh, significant deficiencies or material weaknesses noted in the school board's compliance with its, uh, federal grant programs. Um, also no items of non-compliance, uh, were noted, um, as part of the, the audit. Um, so all three, uh, reports from us that are included in the report, uh, were clean, uh, so a clean audit for the, for the schools. Uh, and just the last thing I'd like to, um, highlight, if you were interested in reviewing the, the financial information for the school board, uh, the, the financial statements for the school board, um, start on PDF page 94. And, uh, starting on page 94 is where the financial, 194 is where the financial statements start. And there's about six pages of, of financial, uh, information that, um, reports the various financial information for the fiscal year. Um, but that's all I have, but I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Having three clean opinions seems pretty good to me.
It is.
Are there any other questions? I did just have one question, I, I know Mr. Zimmerman does a great job, but do you ever, I mean, are there localities or school divisions that have unclean audits or?
Yes, uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, there's, um, definitely, uh, divisions that have, um, that have a wide range of, um, opinions that are not so good. Whether it's, um, you know, issues with the, the financial statements or if you have significant, uh, issues in internal controls or federal compliance. So, um, it, it does happen.
I guess Maya as well and, and a whole bunch of, and Rosalyn and a whole bunch of people, because I guess just my whole time here, I've gotten nothing but that we have great reports, so good job, everyone. Awesome. Um, let me check and see if we need to receive that for action, nope, just for information, so that's all, thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Next up will be the second quarter, uh, fiscal year 2022, 2023 financial report.
Uh, good evening, school board members. Um, Jackson Zimmerman again, back for the, uh, second quarter financial report. Uh, present for the board's consideration, the financial report for October, November and December of 2022. Uh, including in this are projections of revenues for the upcoming year based upon, uh, the most recent available data at the time the report was provided, uh, from the general assembly. Uh, for the current year, because they do update the current year's revenue projections for state revenues, uh, in the December, actually, uh, was the February timeframe is when they did the final update on, on this. And then, uh, we also do projections of our compensation and benefits, which, uh, represents about 85% of the total dollars that are contained within the overall school operating budget. So, um, on the first page, um, we'll just sort of cover the, the two highlights of the, of the document. The first page, we do, uh, an overall look at our revenues and expenditures associated with it. Uh, from our, our revenue perspective, we do anticipate, um, collecting more state revenues than, um, more state revenues for this current fiscal year than we had originally budgeted. Um, sales tax is going to be up, uh, up and then also our enrollment is up slightly from what we had originally budgeted. So those, those two big are the two big factors associated with the increased state revenues. Be a slight decrease in local revenues just because of the continuing effects of the pandemic upon, uh, primarily our rental areas. But, uh, that'll be, um, offset by those, the state, um, state increases that are taking place. And those are very, very small revenue changes overall. The, the large portion that we're seeing here is, is, um, the first, first time in which we're doing a compensation estimate. Uh, we do estimate that we're going to be saving approximately 1.8 million dollars in terms of compensation and benefits through the end of this fiscal year. Those projections are relatively, uh, conservative. We do hope to bring forward, um, additional good information, uh, about, uh, savings, uh, for the third quarter report when that, uh, information becomes available. But right now, um, we do anticipate having a balance of revenues over expenditures of about 2.4 million dollars, uh, for the end of this fiscal year is the existing plan.
Are those, um, that difference in compensation due to just unfilled positions or positions not being filled in the time we anticipated them being filled or other factors?
That's a component of it. Uh, there's also turnover that's associated with, so you, you hire staff and, and the difference in, in salaries that are associated with that. Uh, and there's also, um, significant lag. So somebody, somebody gives you notice two weeks and it takes a month and a half to two months to fill that role, uh, depending upon the situation. And in many cases, we have, uh, some roles. And in many cases, we have some roles that are open up since the beginning of the year. So there are a wide range of those. The other component that's there is we do we do estimate the kinds of health insurance people are going to take. And there's a significant cost differential between an individual taking it versus a family taking it on our plan. So there are a large number of of reasons behind this. We are also seeing increased costs for our substitutes. We didn't budget for the increased rates in our subs, but it's being offset by the the fact that we've got a lot of vacancies throughout our organization.
Thanks.
The last section that we typically go through, unless there are any questions on the on the beginning portions of this, is a look into our available fund balance, anticipation of where we will end up, where we ended last year, how this year is planned, and then where we anticipate ending in the current year, assuming that nothing changes as of today. We had a fund balance of about fourteen million, fourteen and a half million dollars at the beginning of this year. We did budget nine point eight million dollars right here. This nine point eight million dollars was budgeted for use in the budget itself. And then we also brought forward, carry forward for P O's. So P O's that were unable to be filled because of pandemic pandemic-related issues, we brought forward those P O's to be filled in the current year from last year. And so we had just over eleven million dollars worth of fund balance being used in this current year budget. Then we do have some, we do so some increased revenues, and we show the savings that are associated with compensation and benefits. So right now, we are looking at, if we stopped, if this everything came true and we did nothing else, we're looking at about five point eight million dollars in a ending available fund balance. We do believe that 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 money, part of that money may be available for use in both the current year and also for next year's budget needs as come as come forward. And staff will be bringing forward with forward items associated with that throughout this process as we are working through our budget for both the current and next fiscal year. But right now, we are in a good financial situation. It's it's a very, a very good scenario to be in for the Board. And we ask that the Board, I'll be happy to entertain any questions. And if there are none, I would ask that you receive this report.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to accept this financial report?
I move that we accept the second quarter financial report. A second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Alcarro. Alcarro, I, it's been a long day for me. And Mr. Page, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackson.
And that brings us to our last item, which is our approval of the twenty-twenty-four funding request.
Good evening. I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning. We will continue to move through fiscal years, and now we'll look at fiscal year twenty-four. This is the overall budget cycle that was put before you at the beginning of the work sessions, but this is to provide a frame of where we are in terms of the budget process. We've went through community engagement and planning, and you've had three work sessions as part of budget development. And following that, tonight, before you is the funding request for your approval. And then what will happen after this evening is that revenues will be finalized over the next few weeks to finalize our corresponding expenditures and to have a balanced budget to adopt that budget at the end of April. The funding request that's before you today remains unchanged from the draft funding request as presented in mid-February. Revenues and expenditures are balanced at two hundred and fifty-seven point three million dollars in these categories. So at this point, I would request a motion to approve the funding request.
I move to adopt the fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four funding request. Do you need me to read the numbers, too? Oh, wow. Two hundred and fifty-seven million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-two for the school fund and twenty-nine million, one hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-six from the special revenue funds.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any conversation or discussion?
Yes, I have a request. So I see that we are adding eight ESOL teachers. I don't think that's enough. I got some estimates from a resettlement agency in town, and they intend to resettle between two hundred and fifty and three hundred people next year. That's that's about the same as this year, but the previous year was five hundred and fifteen. Granted, they don't all come to Almar County Schools. Half of them will be children probably. So the eight kind of gives us, catches us up to where we need to be in terms of staffing ratio. Wondered if we could move that to twelve new ESOL teachers. So that will require a shuffling of the priorities. And if we can do this, I would request that we not lose any of the other instructional people that we have already agreed upon.
So what we'll do is, as as we talked about this earlier, what we'll do is go ahead and put that into the hopper, and we'll, we're going to keep monitoring until we get to the point where we see what the actual state budget's going to be, and then we'll go ahead and redo priorities if we need to. We may need to, we may not. So I think we'll definitely put that in there among our list of to-dos. I think there's a good rationale for it. I just saw an email from Lauren McLean talking about it, kind of analyzing the numbers. So I'll forward that out to the Board, provides a little more detail. Does that sound good, Maya?
I thought it was good, and actually, I asked for this, for us to get the mid-year data review before we talked about the budget because I always want us to keep in mind what we're funding. And as I mentioned in previous meetings, when we've talked about these incredible gaps that we still have with our membership groups, that we need to be sure to hold ourselves accountable. So when we have these draft funding requests that we have accountability metrics in them, I did not find as many as I would have liked in this one. Matt, you have mentioned ways to add them to future ones. So I just want us to keep all those things in mind, especially with these numbers that we saw earlier today.
So, and I thought your feedback at the last meeting was really great, like high-quality feedback, and it kind of falls in alignment with what Katrina was saying earlier about having these conversations at the board level. And so Debbie and her staff have worked on the logic models. They're waiting for me to look at them. Our final, our final budget doesn't come out until after we get all the state numbers and everything, get that done. So we felt like we had a little bit of time, but we are working on providing more specific metrics in the logic models that you had questions about.
Okay. Great.
And I appreciate you digging in there. And a SMART goal is not a SMART goal if it's not specific.
While the the financials in the School Board's funding requests will remain unchanged, we are able to make smaller updates to the logic models and some of the requests that were made during the work session. So when we publish the next version of the budget book, while the financials are the same, there will be updates in that book to incorporate your feedback. And then we'll continue working on that up to the adopted budget.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, can we do a roll call vote, please?
For approval, Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Chair Carlson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you very much. Oh, there's.
So the next step is that our School Board representatives, Ms. Carlson and Dr. Acuff, will be presenting the funding request to the Board of Supervisors this coming Monday at three P M. here at Cobb. And then a final reminder to you all and anyone listening that this is not the end of the budget process, this is just sort of a midpoint. So if there's any questions, there, we're still welcoming them and we'll be responding to those. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item ten on our agenda, other business. Is there any other business from Board members?
I want to give a shout out to Mental Health First Aid. I participated that Monday with several faculty members. It's great. If you haven't done it, you should do it.
And in that vein, tomorrow is Social Emotional Learning Day, National. So thanks for bringing that up.
I wanted to make a quick comment about the comments we're receiving about the scheduling, and I would like to ask staff if it's thirty minutes or less. I think I can do that alone to provide more information on the logic behind the switch or the data that we relied on.
Yes, I've gotten a lot of comments about that, too.
That concludes, I'm sorry, I'm moving slow, guys, it's because I have like eight billion tabs open, and if I get off the agenda, then I have to click through and find back. Okay, that concludes. Is there any other meeting or any other business? Then I call this meeting adjourned.